All right, thank you, Mr. Strong. It is Monday, November 18th at 7:30. I call the city council to order. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Stingline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
O'Day?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Baddo?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pardon me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
You should probably acknowledge Kerry Terry's on the --
That's next.
All right.
You've got it. Thank you, Chief Stunek, and that was just acknowledging that Councilmember Terry is attending virtually from 310 Canal Park Drive in Duluth, Minnesota, 558023. Next up is item four, approval of the agenda, Mr. Johnson.
I would move approval of the agenda with one change, and that's move 6B7, which is the city administrator to attend conference off of the Personnel and Finance Committee, and move it down to eight, new business, item letter E, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Chesak. Chairman, what do you think?
We did have a third item we added on SPW as well for the hayrides. If you want to --
Yeah, let's add that, too.
Okay, and we'll add the hayrides, too. That'll be on SPW.
Yep.
And this one would be under new business E on the administrative. Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second to add an item under new business E, which is the administrative conference and SPW, third item, which is the hayrides. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Mr. President?
Oh, we have to roll call everything to everything.
Oh, hey.
All right, that's right. Thank you, thank you.
Stunek?
Tony, please call the roll.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yes, the agenda as amended is approved. Item five is consent calendar, where all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yes, the consent calendar is adopted. Item six is council committee report, six A is the Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just had three items tonight. We have, the first item is, not this one, first item is a discussion on sanitary forced main sewer lining project and sewer rates. A motion coming out of committee was actually just to send this one back to staff requesting some more information, bring it back to the next meeting, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you. Next item was direction on active code enforcement cases. This was a, motion coming out of committee was to go with staff's recommendation on a $300 citation once a month until correction plan is approved by the Community Development Department. ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline, any discussion? Chairman, O'Day?
The address, this is 401 Fourth Avenue Northeast. It's an exterior structure, needs paint badly. They have been working with staff on and off, but it has not come to completion as quickly as we'd like to see, so we're, keep working with them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Thank you. Last item is a event application that just came across this afternoon. This is for the holiday tree lighting and hayrides. This is on the 30th of November from about 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. downtown Brainerd. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the event application as submitted with one change, it did originally say 11/27, we changed that to 11/30. ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak, any discussion? Any discussion, hearing none? Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item 6B, Personal and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items, the first of which is to ratify the hiring of Brandon Bergow as a police intern, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Brandon Bergow as our 2024 Fall Police Intern, effective November 19th, 2024, at $20.09 per hour, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek, any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Next up is another hiring, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Nicholas Carvali as an apprentice line worker, effective November 12th, 2024, at $35.08 per hour, which represents the first six months of the apprentice line worker progression schedule, and ISO move.
Motion by Johnson, a second by Terry, any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that res, that motion passes, please proceed.
And next up is an MOA with IBEW, and the motion is to approve the attached MOA with IBEW, Local Number 31 Administrative Support, setting the 24 to 26 wages for the administrative assistant position, further to authorize staff to conduct an internal hiring process for the administrative assistant position, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
This is the job that we slightly changed the job description at the previous meeting, and now we're going to post it internally.
This position does work at the, every council meeting for life, correct?
Yeah, as soon as they sign on, they don't leave.
Evi. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll, please.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that, that motion is approved, please proceed.
Okay, the next motion is a deferment of assessment, and the motion is to approve the application for deferment of assessments payable in 2025 for PID 41250586, and ISO move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by, motion by Johnson, second by Stunek, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
This application was received, and staff determined that it meets all of the council set criteria for deferring assessments, so we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Okay, next up is the civil attorney contract, and the motion is to remain with RRM RRM, and direct staff to enter into negotiations with them for financial counsel for consideration, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry, Chairman Johnson?
So, yeah, we discussed whether we should issue an RFP and kind of price shop our civil attorney contract, and with a split vote, we determined that we are satisfied with Ratwick, and they, we're currently going through the arbitration process with one of our unions, and we decided it wouldn't be a good idea to change. I voted no, I do think we should price shop, but I understand why it would be a good idea to remain with them as well.
Mr. Chair, Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
I was just wondering, you know, what they, what they negotiated, if they have any idea, staff, how long they might negotiate for. I think the current one has been 10 years, if I'm not mistaken? Is that, is that correct?
You may, Mr. Brawls can answer that.
Okay. Yeah, the last time, I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think the last time, yes, I do, the last time we went out for RFP for this contract was in 2013 for services effective beginning in 2014. That's the last time we put it out for competition.
I, I think I can add something there, Kelly.
Oh, okay, hang on. You get to be next. Mr. Chesak has the floor, then Mr. Johnson, then Connie Hillman.
So, I, I would, I don't know if it's possible, but I would like to see a shorter term come back and see what the, if there's a huge difference between, say, two or three years as opposed to much longer than that, that's kind of --
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Johnson?
Per our charter, we appoint our city attorney every two years, so I think we do two-year contracts, because the January of every year after an election, we appoint the city engineer, the city attorney, all those positions per charter, so I think it's always, it's a two-year contract.
I think so, too. Finance Director, Hillman?
That's what I was going to say, is that we have done two contracts for every two years.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other? Okay, hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes, please proceed.
Okay, next up is the levy and budget discussion. We were presented some information on the updated numbers for the budget, and then we provided some direction on staff questions, and you guys will have to correct me if I missed something here, but the motion out of committee was to reduce the capital levy by $100,000, increase the airport levy to $125,000, and remove $10,000 from the street tree capital budget, and setting the levy at 4.75% for the public meeting in December, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek, any discussion?
Connie, correct me if I missed something there?
I just want to clarify that we're cutting the capital levy by $100,000 each year going forward.
Correct.
And that we wanted to reduce the park board's facility funding request by $100,000 each year as well.
That's the $100,000 we're cutting, correct?
Yes. So, if you look at the, we did include in the packet a new revised snapshot of the capital plan as well.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, we talked about the airport levy, I mean, about half a dozen times in the last year, and it's kind of interesting how we start out with a request from the airport of 2/25, and then out of committee, it comes back at 150, or in the committee, they discussed it at 150, and it got brought back at 14680, $146,080, and that got defeated at the council level, and then the motion was for $1,000, be out of fairness, and I'd just like to remind my colleague here about a comment she made a couple meetings back regarding a person, Hawaii's friend, who said that the, the government isn't always efficient, but it's supposed to be fair, and when we talk about fairness, that's what that $1,000 was based on, fairness to our taxpayers who get levied by the county, and our taxpayers are also, for the most part, every year have been paying an equivalent amount, plus having them pay for staff time, which we've now seen is upwards of $25,000 and perhaps even more, and we're talking about fairness, so why do we keep shuffling this around? We want to, we want to look out for our taxpayers, and every time we, we see projects come forward for a million, one, we were willing to supposedly push them down the road a couple years and add another $300,000 or $400,000 on, doesn't seem, nobody seems to bat an eye like the, like the sanitary sewer line down there along Riverside Drive, and, and these are the things that people are paying for, and we look at the airport ordinance that was suggested in the committee, that it's our responsibility to the airport to, to pay them more, and I differ with that, if, Mr. Bevins, did you get that, that ordinance portion I sent you? Would you be willing to read that, so everybody understands it's not our responsibility to match what the county pays? It's clear in that ordinance that we can choose what we want, it's up to the other side to determine if they want to continue with the same amount or pay more. So, right there, that gives the county the ability to levy the entire county, the entire, administer the entire levy that the airport is looking for, as we discussed numerous times. I don't know if you really need to read that, you could read the one sentence in there, probably where, two sentences where it says that. Would you mind doing that?
Not at all, Mr. Chesak, and then I'll turn the floor back to you.
Thank you.
This was sent by you today at 5:09 p.m. Airport ordinance is the heading, such budgets shall be submitted no later than September 1st to the City Council and the County Board. The final decisions of the City Council and the County Board as to the requested additional contributions shall be reported back to the commission. The city shall pay 50% of the total contributions paid into the current airport fund by the city and county each year. If either the City Council or the County Board fixes its contributions at less than the amount requested by the commission, the contribution of the others shall be decreased proportionally unless the latter shall decide to pay a larger portion of the total contribution than is required by this agreement. Mr. Chesak?
Thank you very much. So, when I hear the comment that we have to fulfill our responsibility to the airport, well, our responsibility is what we think is fair, and that's our taxpayers that are paying this money, it's not the city, it's not the City Council, we see this wording all the time, we see the wording in different documents we have for this meeting, it, it says the city this, the city that, anytime there's an expenditure, it's not the city, it's the people in the city, it's not the City Council, it's always the people paying these bills, and we have a way to remedy this, it's very simple, everybody knows it, but why, why some people aren't registering that? I've seen one member of the PNF start out with approving the 255, and then, or 225, then drop down to 150, and then that didn't pass, they went 140, 148, or 14680, and then when the vote came to do 1,000, they did 1,000, and now they're back up to the 150, and then they go down to 125. I don't know what some people are doing over here, and I'd just like to say that this is an important item, we, we, our negotiation is simple, we say we're going to give $1,000, and we do that, and then next year, the county says, okay, they're only going to pay 1,000 bucks, are we going to have this airport get the operating levy they need to operate, or are we going to sit here and play patty cake and go back and forth because somebody's got a petty issue with some sort of, perhaps it's a, it's petty politics is all we see happening here, and I'm looking out for our taxpayers, that's what I'm doing by a $1,000 levy. Thank you, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Anybody else wish to discuss?
Was that a motion to amend, or just?
Nope.
Just a no vote?
It was just a comment.
Okay.
I like the comment. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
How do we get to 125,000 for the airport at PNF?
I can, I can answer that. Yeah, so at the meeting, two members of the committee wanted to come back at a 150 number to the council. One member of the committee said, well, we tried that once, and it didn't work, so then we looked at the roughly $25,000 in staff time that we're putting into the airport, reduced the 150 by that, and ended at 125.
Thank you.
That's how we got there.
Can I answer your question?
It does. But I'm, I'm wondering what the finality is of this motion, when we, if, if I'm voting yes on this.
There's no finality until we approve the levy on what date, Connie, we could change this daily.
December 31st.
December 31st.
We could, yes, we could call additional meetings.
We could have a special meeting on New Year's Eve, are you kidding?
I think we have to have the county buddy, summer 31st, so we just suggest he's 30th.
We're pretty good at making changes.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Bevins? I'm sorry, our levy discussion?
Can, can Mr. O'Day just make sure he's done?
I just don't think that, I, I don't think that we're all in agreement on what that airport number is yet, so I probably will vote, I'm going to vote no on this.
Thank you.
If it's.
Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I think, Connie, isn't our meeting on December 2nd where we have the public hearing, or the levy discussion for the public?
That is where we have that, and so that's where I'm looking for guidance on what to present at that meeting, and then we'll make the final levy at the second meeting in December, December 16th, or we call a special meeting.
Unless this motion passes, it's $1,000. I can answer that, that this council has approved a $1,000 airport levy. This is a proposal, a different proposal, but a proposal. Any other comments?
Well, a question, Mr. Chair, if this fails, can I take another shot to pass everything that we recommended that isn't related to the airport?
You, you could actually do that right now if you wanted to, you could separate that out, but maybe we should just defeat this, which is what I like to do.
Okay.
If it's going to be defeated, I don't mean to speak for the council.
Mm-hmm.
But that would be the, okay, I, I, I would, I would like to comment on this, I, I'm going to vote against it for the airport levy, I supported the 1,000, I agree with Mr. Chesak, I think taxation of our citizens, double taxation is, is, is something we can fix right now, and I think the real, the, the additional tragedy is not only the double taxation, but the fact that we, we made a proposal in writing to the county to discuss this, and, and the response, I, I don't want to report what you told me, because it doesn't reflect well on our friends at the county, but it, it appears they're not interested in even discussing the administration of the levy. I mean, if the county would administer the levy, they could set the levy at the 250, right, and we'd all, we'd all in the city of Brainerd only pay 1, so, anyway, I'm going to vote against this, because I don't like the 125, and I really don't like the fact that we're getting double taxed, so as much as the 125 might be necessary to operate the airport, I'm not arguing that, I don't think it should fall on the backs of not solely the Brainerd taxpayers, but at least primarily the Brainerd taxpayers. Anybody else? Okay, Tony, let's call the roll, but this includes 125 for the airport.
Stunek?
No.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Chesak?
No.
O'Day?
No.
Bevins?
No, motion fails, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move that we reduce the capital levy $100,000 per year from the parks outside aside, and reduce the capital street tree budget by $10,000 for 2025, and ISO move.
Motion by Johnson is there, a second?
Second.
Second by Chesak, any discussion on this? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes. At this point, Connie, the airport levy is at $1,000, that has been passed by the council. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add to this?
I should do one more motion.
You can.
On this same agenda item, and that is to set the levy increase amount for the public hearing, that's really the primary thing we need to do here.
Yep.
And let's set that at 4%, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by O'Day, does that?
4.75% would have 125 going to the airport.
I like this motion.
Okay.
Oops, I spoke ahead of everybody, I'm sorry. Mr. Chesak?
Does the math work there, Gabe?
I, I don't have the exact math, there's, there would still be capacity to lower it with the $1,000 airport levy, though.
But this is just for --
This is just for the public hearing that we're doing on December 2nd.
Okay. Which it could change between now and then, we're good at changing that.
Well, I like the sound of 4%.
I do, too. All right, hearing no further discussion. Tony?
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. That motion passes. Connie, I think for presentation on the first meeting in December, a 4% will actually have a little --
Fun balance.
A little fun balance, which we can decide what to do with then, but at this point, the airport is still 1,000, okay? Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, end of report.
Thank you, and thank you all for speaking civilly. Next up is seven unfinished business, seven, a call for applicants, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, the following applications are available on the city's website. The, do, 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 do. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Library Board, one term expiring 2025. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2026, and the Economic Development And the economic development authority, one term expiring 2026. And you're going to want to get in on those because it's the end of the year, and people like to start filling those up. So, get your applications in soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as council president, I have two terms to expire 12/31 on the planning commission, one in 2027 and one in 2026. And I've already received at least one application. So, again, as the mayor said, let's get them in now. Thank you very much. Next up is seven unfinished business. B, a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bond series 2024, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment. I presume this is you, Connie?
It is.
Do you have all the current numbers?
It is, and I would like to, staff would like to turn over to Ms. Lauren Volz from Baker Tilly to provide the council with information on the sale.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'd like to summarize a little bit of the sale results from this morning for the city's general obligation bond series 2024A. Proceeds will be used to finance the North Brainerd reconstruction project for various street and utility-related improvements. So, as of October of 2024, our market was showing a true interest rate to the city of about 3.38%. And last week, we were up a little bit, about 3.35%. But this morning, our actual results were 3.16% from Hilltop Securities. And if I could go to the next slide, we had seven bidders, which was very good. We had a very busy sale day today with lots of issues in the market. So, we had seven bidders with about 20 basis points in between our highest and our lower, lowest bids. Our lowest true interest rate to the city being Hilltop and some familiar purchasers in there before that have purchased the city's issues previously. And we are, if we go to the next slide, we are, interest rates are still historically low, but definitely up since 2019 and 2020, since our, our COVID historical lows. And the, our rating agency, Standard and Poor's, has affirmed the city's double A-minus rating, which is in the A category, one of the, the highest ratings that a municipality can achieve. And so, some of the reasons why a city might be rated is that it's an outside assessment of the city's creditworthiness, and the stronger the rating, the lower the true interest cost to the city is going to be. And it's part of investors and an underwriter's due diligence. And so, again, the S&amp;P assigned a double A-minus to the city's bond issue and all of the city's outstanding general obligation debt. So, some of the main points they highlighted were that the city is continuing to grow in population and market values, and they also highlighted the conservative management practices that have been ongoing with the city and the city's healthy fund balances and liquidity. And one other piece I would like to mention is that the power amount we went out with this morning, the $3,370,000 power amount, we were able to reduce that by a couple hundred thousand dollars due to some special assessments, some prepaid amounts that had come in, in the amount of 178,000, and the fact that Hilltop had bid premiums, we were able to reduce the borrowing to a power of 2,910,000 and able to give the city the required amount to fund projects today. So, our recommendation is to approve the resolution awarding the bonds to Hilltop Securities based on their low bid of 3.168%. Are there any questions that I can help answer?
Any questions of our bond council? Any questions of staff? Connie, anything else you'd like to add? Then we're looking for a resolution to adopt, to, looking to adopt the resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds, series 2024A, and the original aggregate principal amount of $2,910,000 to Hilltop Security, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Anything else by the bond council?
Congratulations to the city and thank you for allowing Baker Tilly to assist you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Next up is item, uh, I'm sorry, where we, oh, yes, item eight, new business, 8A discussion of the process to fill vacant at-large position effective January 6, 2025 is what is listed in our packet. Connie, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Just that the, really, the recommended actions and motions should be first to determine the process that's going to be used to fill the vacancy, then declare the vacancy of the at-large position set to expire December 31, 2026. And then, based on the process that's used to determine, establish a time period for the applications to be accepted and the date when council, city council is expected to act.
Thank you. And this would be for Mr. Chesak's at-large position for the last two years. Any questions of staff? Mr. Chesak?
I'm ready for a motion.
I like the, I like the way you think. Any questions? I'll ask this one more time, and then I'll turn it to Mr. Chesak. You're up, Mr. Chesak.
Yes, I would move that the vacancy be declared as of December 31, 2026 for the at-large position that I currently hold. And then, the applications acceptance are by the city starting tomorrow, the 19th of November, and close the application, uh, close the application timeframe on Monday, December 30th, and then the appointment made at the January 6, 2025 city council meeting, or the review of the applications and possible appointment be conducted at the January 6, 2025 city council meeting. I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Chesak, a second by Johnson. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Originally, I'd talked to Kelly and Nick about this, and I supported just moving quickly and getting it done this year, but I had a good conversation with Jeff that there was a new council member elected who should have their voice heard in the process. So, we should wait until the new council is seated at the table to make the appointment. So, I support Jeff's motion.
Thank you. My, my only question is, and I, I support the motion 100%, but, and for the reasons that Jeff and Gabe have said, is does December 30th, six days, give us enough time based on who knows how many applications we're going to get to review them? And I, I can't answer that. I just thought cutting off application, well, it has created a problem recently, so, with the hiring. So, I just was a little concerned that six days may not be enough time, may not. I don't know. You guys can decide. The motion says December 30th. Mr. O'Day?
I'd be comfortable making it earlier, but I think as long as it's before the packet comes out and it's included in the packet before that meeting with that applicant information or just the applicant form or whatever it is, cover letter, whatever they submit, I think if that information is in our packet, then we should all make time to go through it.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes. Next up is eight new business, B, calling for a public hearing to request to vacate right-of-ways. This is, well, it says Mike, but Jesse Dean, our city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, staff is recommending that the council call for a public hearing considering vacation of the public right, right-of-way of two plats, Madison Heights and Rata Mocker's Commercial Edition. The Madison Heights plat is the Graydon Avenue area, just north of the Buffalo Hills Lane. So, staff is recommending consideration of vacating Outlet B and the 10-foot walk between lots eight and nine. On the Rata Mocker's Commercial Edition, staff is recommending consideration of vacating the frontage road between block one and Highway 25 next to lots one and two. Per the discussion in September and the state statute referenced in the agenda item, council can vacate the right-of-way with a resolution passed by a supermajority. A public hearing must first be held with the adjacent property owners noticed. The recommendation is to schedule the public hearing for the December 16th council meeting. You can answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Thank you very much. We're looking for a motion calling for the public hearing for each of the right-of-way vacations to be held on Monday, December 16th at our normal council meeting at 7:30 PM.
So, second.
Motion by Stunek, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, please, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes. Next up is item eight, new business, C, public hearing and adopting a resolution ordering improvement and ordering preparation of plans for improvement 23-13 Trunk Highway 371B and Willow Street Roundabout Project. Again, Jesse?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. So, as part of the assessment proceedings, staff is recommending that the council hold the improvement hearing for improvement 2313, which includes the full reconstruction of Willow Street between South Sixth and Seventh Streets. Following the public hearing, staff is recommending council adopt the attached resolution that orders the improvement and orders preparation of the plans. Staff will be available to answer questions as needed.
Let's ask if there's any questions from the council on this project. Hearing none. It is 8:06, and we will open the public hearing. And if you've got something you'd like to say about improvement 23-13, this is the 371 Business Willow Street Roundabout Project, please step forward, state your name and address, and tell us what you think. If you're online, star three lets us, notifies us that you wish to speak. Come on up. Thanks for coming. State your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Blake Peterson, 623 Willow Street.
Thanks for coming, Blake.
Appreciate your time. So, I would be interested in having some clarification on this project. It looks to be that I'm speaking for one of the properties that is being affected by this. And so, the first section states that basically the city will be acquiring about a 50-foot by 10-foot parcel on the front section of the property, and we'll be getting about $100 for that, which is apparently a fair market value, although I feel like if I tried to buy it from the city, that's not exactly the number that I would be offered. The real question I have here is then, it says, "We will be required to pay half of the other portion of the easement when the city acquires kind of all the way up to the front of the house." So, why is it the homeowner's responsibility to pay $5,200 so that I, so that we sell you the land, is my question?
That is a good question. We're going to see if somebody from staff can answer that. Jesse, you want?
Yes, sir. So, I'll quick clarify. So, the 50% of the assessment cost is for the street reconstruction cost, not for easement. What you're referring to for the easement costs that we're acquiring is for our cost to construct the project. That isn't a cost that we're going to look to recoup through the project. The cost that we're talking about with this assessment hearing would be just street reconstruction costs, so rebuilding of the pavement, the curb, sidewalk, costs associated with the street reconstruction. So, per the special assessment policy, city picks up 50% of that, and the assessed property owners pay 50% of that. There is a side yard deduction that doesn't necessarily apply here because it's just the one block here, but you're based on the front, frontage, the front, frontage of that, on that block. Yes, sir.
Come on back. That's all right. So, does that make sense as you, you get to, yeah, you, the cost of the road costs a lot more. Your portion is $10,400, and we pay half and you pay half.
Okay.
The easement is just, we're not actually buying that property. We're just going to use it, and when it's all done, you won't even know it.
Correct.
We're not building anything on that property, are we? That's not a?
The, there is a small section that is?
That's not a right-of-way purchase, is it?
Permanent easement, it would be permanent, essentially, right-of-way.
Okay.
But I'd have to look at that property specifically.
You might want to come by tomorrow and see what we're planning on doing on that 10x50B.
I think a sidewalk is going in on the front section, and then just a roundabout is going in down the road. So, I guess my thoughts are, so, I mean, what was already kind of mentioned here in this council meeting is that, you know, the city's not exactly paying for this. The taxpayers are paying for this. So, in theory, this already is being budgeted by homeowners and stuff, and I'm feeling like putting a roundabout necessarily on that corner is not going to improve the property value of this any. In fact, it's going to make more traffic down that road because it's going to make that a much more consistent thoroughfare. So, if anything, it feels like we're being required to pay $5,250 to potentially lose a property value at best. I just don't see where the value is actually coming back to this property.
And that's what we have this for. So, you get to make that statement? If you wish to do something about that, there's a whole other process where you'd have to get an attorney and say, "I'm not receiving value for my money."
So, that is the avenue that I would move forward with?
Yep.
Okay. I suppose that that is my statement. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience or online that wishes to speak to us regarding improvement I'll ask a second time and a third and final time. I will close the public hearing at 8:12, and I will look for a motion to adopt the attached resolution in which orders the improvement and preparation of the plans.
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second? Second by O'Day, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is a first reading for proposed ordinance 1577, the annexation of 15106 Riverside Drive. Mr. Krambek, it seems like we've done this recently.
We have. Thank you, Mr. President. So, this does have to be redone. Upon review, the Office of Administrative Hearings determined that staff only noticed one of the two owners of a contiguous parcel next to 15106 Riverside Drive. The owners were not listed on Crow Wing County's website, but due to both owners not being notified, the office is requiring the ordinance and public hearing to be redone. So, staff has notified the public hearing for December 16th as it requires a 30-day notice. That additional property owner was notified. After consulting with the city attorney prior to the meeting, staff does recommend adding one additional line to the ordinance. Upon passage, this ordinance repeals ordinance 1576. So, with that, staff recommends to conduct the first reading with the additional line and dispense with the actual reading of proposed ordinance 1577, an ordinance providing for the annexation of 15106 Riverside Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Have a question?
Yeah, okay. I, I'm going to note your guys' enthusiastic motion and second, but I, I really think I should ask for, if there's any questions of staff, Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, Mr. Krambek, do I understand you correctly that the OAH found this discrepancy?
They did.
Unbelievable. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none. We have a, a motion to conduct the first reading of ordinance 1577 with the additional line item as outlined by Mr. Krambek and dispense with the actual reading and an, an ordinance providing for the annexation of 15106 Riverside Drive. And of course, as usual, to dispense with the actual reading, this vote must be unanimous. The motion is by O'Day, second by Stingline. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes. We'll do it again in two weeks for the last time. Change the airport levy three more times. Next up is going back to the PNF agenda on the, on the request by Mr. Broyles. Mr. Broyles, we might as well turn it right over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gosh, within the last few days, I guess, the Association of Governmental Risk Pools is, is holding their annual governance conference from March 16th to 19th. That's a Sunday through a Wednesday in Las Vegas, Nevada. Sourcewell has invited all of their board of trustees to attend. I'm privileged enough to be able to sit on that board. All expenses for this trip would be paid by Sourcewell. So, the board of trustees, I sit on the board of trustees. We oversee the Better Health Collective, which is our pool for our employees, and this is just our annual governance conference. All expenses will be paid by Sourcewell. It would just cost me my time. I am asking the board for permission to attend this. I would certainly be available. I'll be tracking my emails, phone calls, et cetera, but I would be out of the area for Monday through Wednesday of that week. I would just ask the board to consider that.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Where's it at?
A really crummy hotel, but it is in Las Vegas.
Las Vegas, Nevada.
I missed, I knew I'd read it, just forgot.
Mr. Johnson?
I have a motion when you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'd move to authorize city administrator to attend the AGRIP conference, governance conference, March 16th through the 19th, 2025.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yep.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. I, I would imagine your phone will be ringing off the hark during peep, peep crap's time. Next up is item nine, public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We'd like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. It's 8:17. I will open the public forum. If you're not in the audience but are online, star three will notify us that you wish to speak, and then star six will unmute you. I'll ask a second time if there's anybody in the audience or online who wishes to bring something forward to the council that is not on tonight's agenda. And I will ask a third and final time if there's anybody wishes to speak to the council on an item that's currently not being discussed this evening. And I will close the public forum, and I will go to staff reports. We'll turn to our right. Welcome aboard, Eric Sharpentier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, just a quick update today for the council in regards to our Small Cities Development Program grant that we are working on, the pre-application for. for. My staff did have a meeting with our deed rep last week in preparation of that pre-application that's set to be submitted by the end of the month. Our deed rep actually has indicated that our application would be likely more competitive with only submitting a streetscape portion of that application for this round, since we do currently have a Small Cities grant out in southeast Brainerd right now for rehab. We would then plan on submitting another pre-application at the end of next year if the council would so choose to allow us to do that, to then include commercial and housing rehab for that project area for the funding in 2026 to really be used in that second year of the reconstruction cycle. Something that caught us a little off guard by the fact that we've got currently a grant up there in southeast Brainerd right now, something we can work through, and we're still very optimistic that we would get the streetscape, which is about $600,000 for the city to utilize for lighting, park benches, things like that along that thoroughfare. So wanted to give you guys an update before we did submit that pre-application. We do want to believe what our deed rep is giving us as far as good information and heed, heed their advice on this. That is it.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpentier. Police Chief Davis?
Nothing to add, thank you.
That, those whiskers helping with the deer hunting at all, or? No, not at all. Okay. ITGIS Director Strong?
Nothing today.
Finance Director Hillman?
Nothing to add.
Engineer Dean, you're here.
Mike.
You got it. Mike Havigors, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, President, Mayor, and Council. Last week, we reported an exposure of a sewer main near Evergreen Cemetery. We had a contractor out there stabilizing that, and engineer staff are going to be working on a survey and design to prevent any future damage to that area. And then lastly, we also installed, or we're in the process of installing some cameras at a few of our locations, and thank you for Chief Davis, for staff helping us locate or put those in good locations for vandalism and other items. There's the three different locations of the bridge, that, that path underneath there, Lyman White, where the restrooms and the amphitheater, and then Kiwanis Park also. So those are the three locations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Community Development Director Krambeck?
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the next Planning Commission meeting, the commission will be reviewing three short-term rentals for renewal. Also will be reviewing a CUP for a brew pub at the Last Turn Saloon, and finally reviewing the CUP and variance request for seven residential units above Bob and Franz. With that, staff is also, has begun preparing a crypto ordinance for commission review in December. The EDA and city council were able to tour the Gist for Crypto facility this last week, very interesting. So thankful that they were able to show us that, and will certainly be beneficial in helping create that ordinance. That's everything I have.
Well, repeat what the Bob and Franz thing was.
It's a CUP request as well as a variance request for seven apartments above Bob and Franz.
Okay.
They had to leave the beds up there, so they...
Yeah.
Smart idea.
Mr. Langill?
Nothing.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Langill? Will we be receiving an update on our property purchase? We had, recently had a closed session, and I thought we'd have heard something back.
We're still waiting for signed documents from the seller.
Got it.
Instead of doing it by mail, he's traveling eight hours back here, signing books.
Soon.
Very soon.
All right. HR Director Schubert?
Nothing to me.
Our Public Utilities Director, Mr. Evans?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to my absolute favorite time of every council meeting, the mayor's report.
Thank you, President.
Uh, what about Nick?
What?
Nick?
Administrator? No. He's going, we're paying for him to go, no, we're actually not paying for him to go to Las Vegas. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I will pause my time.
Just add an extra five minutes.
I can gladly do that.
City Administrator Broyles, I apologize.
Not at all. My, my, mine will be very short, very, very, very sweet. I'm going to be on vacation beginning Wednesday, day after tomorrow, to go see our first grandchild out in Washington. So I'll be on vacation Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week. That's all I have.
Thank you. Now, the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
He's just announcing vacations tonight.
Yeah. He hasn't even been here in years.
Yeah, exactly. Super fast. The Brain Community Action and the Brainy J.C.'s were able to do some awards the last couple days, and so I just wanted to give a tip of the cap to nonprofit of the year, Visit Brainerd, and today, just today, announced Citizen of the Year Wade Hoppajokie.
Ooh.
And he cried. So Wade, you're welcome for making you cry. It was great. It was actually very, very, very touching, and I couldn't think of a better recipient for this year. Should be an award ceremony in the first or second week of January, so stay tuned for that. One massive event, to quickly ballooning into epic proportions here. Small Business Saturday is Saturday, November 30, not November 27. Saturday, November 30 is Small Business Saturday Downtown. The Window Walk will be happening from 11 to 6. There will be hay rides now from 4:30 to 6:00 PM, and then the tree lighting ceremony right here, City Hall parking lot, 5:00 PM. Fingers crossed, we're trying to do something extra special with that, but we'll see what happens. However, that also means, ladies and gentlemen, the unveiling of the cookie statues will be happening that day as well. You've all been excited, Christmas cookie statues. You've all been waiting for it. I probably developed cancer over the weekend while inhaling lots of styrofoam. However, these statues look really, really cool, and I'm excited for people to see that. So that will be unveiled on Saturday, November 30, for those of you that can't keep track, which is myself. End of, end of report.
Are those cookie statues scratch and sniff?
Well, I'll tell you what it smells like, burnt styrofoam.
Nice. All right, let's go to council member reports, and let's start with online care, Terry.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Chief Stunek?
Nothing to report.
Gabe Johnson?
Kids, don't dropkick the cookies.
Please don't dropkick the cookies. That's all I have.
Boy, you're like the no fun guy. You're like the Grinch, there's got to be one. I, I would add to Mr. Krambeck's report, kind of sad to see Bob and Franz going out of business. They've been family owned for many, many years. I stopped in today at Auto Import, the Volkswagen dealer. That family's been operating that business since 1959. So those are two sad losses to the business community, but thank both families for their years of, of putting up with the rest of us. So, Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, I want to say congratulations to Administrator Broyles on the, the first grandbaby. Congratulations, sir. I also want to say thank you to all the voters. This is our first time, I think, meeting since the election, and the poll workers. I think we had, it's, it's amazing how much work that is and how fast our poll workers in Crow Wing County get everything turned in when, for some reason, in California, I don't even know if they're done yet. So I want to say thank you to everybody who worked on that and got those results in efficiently and accurately.
Superhumanly.
Superhumanly. So thank you all for that.
Thank you, Chairman O'Day. Tiffany Stingline?
Nothing for me.
And Jeffrey Chesak?
Uh, yeah, I want to thank Mayor Bedeau and also the dispatch for the fine story they did on the Junior JC award recipient there. That was a really nice story and quite the individual. I can't remember her name, 15-year-old sophomore.
Abigail Hanson.
There you go. Wonderful, wonderful achievement she has and lots of volunteering, but also want to thank, congratulate Nick as well, the first grandbaby, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Item 13, we are looking for a motion to adjourn to closed labor negotiation strategy session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 subdivision 1B to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals conducted pursuant to Minnesota statutes 179A.01 to 179A.25. The closed labor negotiation strategy session meeting may be further closed for discussion of litigation strategy protected by the attorney-client privilege as permitted by Minnesota statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3B. The specific subject to be discussed pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.01 subdivision 3 are the legal positions and strategy in the interest arbitration between the city and IBEW 31 Public Utilities Unit, Bureau of Mediation Services, case number 24-PN-0860.
I move all that.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. Let's take a seven-minute break to clear the room and do whatever personal business...